Time is now twelve oh three on August the seventh, two thousand twenty-three. The special meeting of county and county board trustees is now called to order. Let the record show that this meeting was duly posted in accordance with section five five one point oh four three of the Texas Government Code. And at this time, I'll leave you with prayer and a pledge. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for letting everybody be here today to debate and conduct the business of the school district. Let us remember our common goals and let us work toward them. We ask these things, and your name paid them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, three. At every meeting, we allow time for public comment and public testimony. And although if nobody signed up, we will report, as you know that that is allowed at every single meeting we have. That brings us to presentation items.
Mr. Wells?
Me?
Yes, presentation.
I'm not presenting.
Who knows?
Whatever you want.
Whatever you have on the computer screen.
Okay, it is actually coming into focus behind you. I'm gonna show you basically a comparison and kind of do you a quick explanation on what is actually taking place with compression and what we're actually looking at. You'll see the three columns that we're gonna be looking at are twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three versus the twenty-three, twenty-four beta entry. Okay? You'll see the very top is the number of students that we're actually using for our predictions. All of those numbers that you actually see that are all of your FTEs, like all of the career technology, all of your special pops, this is actually the template that we actually use. We get a template from the state. A guy by the name of Omar Garcia. Omar puts together the template for school funding and we all use it. We input our data and it gives us the best estimate of the type of revenue that we're going to actually get generated locally and from the state. Now, here's our big, here's the big to do. Okay, the big to do is compression. Those values in blue that you see from the twenty twenty-two tax year. Okay? If you start to look at the, on line sixty-six, you'll see that forty thousand dollar homestead exemption. Okay? So when we first got numbers this year, that was prior to them actually talking to us about the hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption, which will be voted on this hall. So, the smart thing to do is for everybody to go in and fix your budgets, basically based on the hundred thousand dollar tax exemption. So that's what we're actually doing. So now, we've been, we've gotten certified values from our county appraisal district, I guess, four times now. Is that correct, Mr. Callahan? And on our newest values, if you look at the hundred thousand dollar exemption, we're going to basically look at a taxable value of that one point seven six two billion dollars. Okay? That's good. But when we go down and we start looking at lines seventy-eight and seventy-nine and eighty, here's the tale of the tape. Our compression, because of the new tax bill, goes down to basically sixty-two cents. But our M and A, our M and O, that what we'll be allowed to charge is seventy-five, seventy-five. So roughly seventy-six cent would be our M and O rate. Okay? What that M and O rate of seventy-six cent basically brings you is it brings you local revenue in the amount of basically thirteen point four seven a million dollars is what we will actually generate locally. Okay? So that's roughly that we're going to generate roughly two million dollars less with compression. So that break is in the form of being able to give our taxpayers the break with the compression and the rate.
Can you talk about compression? What are you talking about? Comparison?
No, compression, making the rate go down.
Go down, okay.
Lower. Making the rate go lower.
Man, mandated.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, mandated. Okay, so with the lowering of our rate, with it going from basically ninety-eight, ten to roughly seventy-six cent, instead of me saying seventy-five, seventy-five, is everybody okay with me saying seventy-six cents? Okay. So, we're roughly two million dollars less on what we'll be generating locally. Now, if we go down and we look at line eighty-three, you start to look at, well, let's go down one more. Let's go down to eighty-five. You start to look at your INS. So the INS is basically our debt service. Okay? We were at basically seven cent and generating basically a million dollars to be able to pay off our debt. However, in previous years, the reason that number was as low as it was is because you know that we were paying our debt from M and O.
Which was allowable.
Which was allowable at the time.
And encouraged to. Probably five years ago.
Five years ago. Yeah, five or six years ago.
Yeah.
Yes.
You could, you could, the tax swap.
Yeah, the tax swap. So what it did is it gave us an opportunity to earn more money for your money, for your pennies on the M and O side, and then you basically pay yourself back on the INS side. So, now that we're not doing that, we're having to actually adopt a true INS rate. So once you adopt that true INS rate, basically, we have a calculation of a rate to maintain, just to maintain where you need to be. But once we put in that, that rate right there of fourteen cent, that basically gives us an opportunity to maintain all of what we need to actually pay our debt. But we also need to look at the big picture. What is the big picture? The big picture is our total tax rate is going from a dollar five down to roughly eighty-nine cents. Okay? So, we will actually have an opportunity, this will be a decision of the board on what we want to do. Because on the M and O side, that's what it is. You know, I mean, that's, that's the mandate. But once you get on your INS side, there's different things that you can do in the event that you want to maintain a level of some of those pennies by adding more to your INS rate. In the event that you want to, 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 to do, to take on some more debt, or if you even want to prepay debt.
Is there a limit?
There is, there's a calculated limit. I couldn't tell you exactly what the calculated limit would be.
Can we get it up to where we would get a dollar five? Closer to it? Or closer to it?
So what I'm hearing is we're okay with keeping our INS, raising our INS to a maximum level of whatever we can, but without raising taxes.
So you're hearing it from me, but if I'm not mistaken, before all this happened, I think the state average was like twenty-one cents. And I guess it's really sad that we were really getting way behind. And I think it's high time that we start picking that up.
I agree with that.
Okay?
Can you roll, scroll down to the bottom?
Yes, I sure can.
What's the collection rate that you're figuring the budget on?
So we normally figure our collection rate on ninety-eight, nine, but we've been pretty, we've been pretty fortunate to where we've been almost at a hundred percent. Even though when we're doing our budget, we kind of figure on that.
You, you begin somewhere around there because you're getting some penalty and.
Well, that's the thing. Because the reason we, we get, we normally gather it all is because of the amount of penalty. Even if you have equal, that, 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 that hit you pay, you still capture it with the penalties that.
People that they're hiring, I don't know who they're with, but it's just the people that they're hiring during this job. They're always trying to collect their taxes and, and.
Okay, so what that would actually do is that would allow us to basically, by doing something of that nature, that would allow us to, to be able to maintain. Because even, here's the thing. What people need to understand is they're still gonna get a tax break because there's, instead of the forty thousand dollar homestead exemption, it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption. So they're still gonna be.
It's coming at our expense, though, that's the problem.
Right. But, it's coming at our, yes.
Schools, I'm talking schools.
At the schools. Yes, no, that's, that's exactly right, no. Yeah.
And then, you know, the hurdle here is it costs, the cost to run the school is the cost to run the school. I mean, there, if you look at the money we're spending, there's not, there's not fluff in it. You know, the only, really the the thing, the projects that have been done the past two, three years have been done out of Esther money, which is not really even a part of this spreadsheet from the whole department, not a part of this conversation, so. So, so it is.
There's gonna be a.
Yeah, it is challenging. Yeah, and that's gonna end. And, and so, the, the challenge, the challenge will be is meeting our need, meeting the budget needs with the new environment, meaning the, the hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption. So we need to make sure that, you know, and we wanna be, we wanna be conscious of the students, and we also, and the school district, and also conscious of the taxpayers.
Okay. All right. That's pretty much all I really need to present.
How do we get the, how do we get the answer to?
Oh, I, oh, I. We'll be able to.
We can, we can.
The email's already been sent.
Yeah. And, and, and what we'll do is, once we, uh, once we get that number, because here, here's the thing. We're basically gonna be putting that, that on top of our INS and we'll have to have a plan of what we're gonna be doing for our INS. But if we're gonna be prepaying debt, but the way to do it is in the event that you wanna do something like, say for instance, Mr. Callahan and I just had a conversation out there about instead of doing something like, you know, we, we, we roll money into the fund outlets, you know, every year for turf, okay, for the turf replacement. If you're prepaying debt, you're, you're smarter to basically do a, you know, time warrants or maintenance tax notes. You get that million dollars and you, you, you already have the, the payment plan built into your funding formula with your INS, with your debt, that you're already capturing your, your debt on.
We, we're, I, I don't believe that there's any way to necessarily pay for time warrants and tax notes out of INS. I think INS is gonna have to be limited to.
Bonds.
Voter approved. But it's potential that you could pay bonds off more quickly.
Right.
Which would then open up an opportunity to consider other bonds down the road.
I'd like.
Or prepaid. You, you, you are, you are able to collect INS for the prepayment of, of bonds.
I'd like to see a, a net neutral option on what that would look like. Net neutral money to, you know, budget from last year and what that would look like, you know, just to consider. I think that might be a good, a good option to see is, what, what could we do tax rate wise that would, that would bring the budget to, to what it is that we need to operate and then see what that tax rate is. And I think that would be the exercise for the next meeting. That's what we would adopt, right?
Yes.
Well, we're gonna have to post a rate.
Right, to post a rate.
So whatever rate you give.
But you, but you post, when does it have to be posted by? Just.
Ten days before the twenty-ninth. It has to be in the paper.
Okay.
And we have, we're already within the thirty-day window, so we can post anytime, but it, we could at, at any point. Part of the reason we wanted to do this today for the seventh, and, and I have to commend Demetrius because we've been getting changes in, in the Warden County appraisal. And again, I wanna publicly state, I don't think this is an issue that is being created by the Warden County appraisal district. I think it's being created by all the uncertainty in Austin with compression and tax rates, et cetera. And I'm not blaming Austin either, I'm just saying that's where we are. But we could potentially give us enough time to try to set a quorum. If we'd have a good discussion today and all of you kind of come to some kind of direction, we could have a short quorum meeting to set a tax rate that Demetrius would still be able to set it, get it in the paper, and still make our ten-day minimum. Because today is the seventh.
Yes, and, and basically what we're doing is, we, we want to, we're, we're doing, the, the main thing is setting the date of the meeting. That's one of the main, main goals of today. And because even, even the numbers that we come up with on rate, the, the county is also doing a rate calculation for the school district as well. Okay? So we, 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 we adopt it, but they're doing a rate calculation to check our rates, to make sure that we're not basically going over our compression.
Right. Yeah.
And so.
They do that every year.
Do what?
I mean, they do that every year.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think we ought to discuss this. I'm, I kinda threw out what I would like to see, just to kind of start out as a, what a, what a neutral budget looks like. One that brings in the same amount of revenue as we did last year. Obviously, the rates are gonna be compressed, the rates are gonna be different, but from, from a, from a taxpayer standpoint and a school district standpoint, it would kind of, kind of reach a, a, a natural balance there. Anybody else have a?
Well, I mean, we may not be able to operate on the same thing we did last year. We need to figure out what we're gonna need to operate this year. Or is this coming in?
So, so, so basically, the way the state has told us, compression is working. Okay? So if you look, I'm gonna go over here to. The state aid is in yellow. So, we would be generating basically thirteen and a half million. Our state aid would go up to twenty-one million. Okay. From, let me see what it was.
The number's fifty-one, fifty. Fifty-one or forty-nine percent.
Last year.
Last year. So divide thirty-four, both sides are pro, approximately giving seventeen million, approximately. The rate was fifty-one percent state, forty-nine percent us, or it could have been opposite. But it was about a fifty-fifty split. Now you're looking at twenty-one, thirteen.
Now, but the, but the difference is.
What was the state contribution last year?
Seventeen million.
Roughly seventeen million. Yes.
Okay, so it would have been a fifty-fifty split.
Start from forty-eight dollars.
But, but here's the thing though. The, the issue is, the number is roughly the same. There's no growth.
Right.
See what I'm saying?
The other, the other question I have is that so many times, state money comes with some kind of earmark on it that local money didn't have. Are they, is this twenty million dollars it's gonna be, say, hey, you gotta spend this on facilities for this program?
It, it may not be facilities, but it will, but it will be pupil, it will be tied to certain.
Your earmark.
Earmark for certain people.
It's not, it's not money for, to solve a crisis that pops up.
It's not money that the board has control over. It is, it is controlled by the state.
Yeah. And that's, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a worse model. I mean, because things, things do come up in school districts, you're like, man, we, lucky we, lucky we saved our money here because now we can fix this glaring problem, but now it's all tied to the state.
So, so there, there are some assumptions on why so many things are tied to the state. And the biggest assumption is vouchers, okay? So, um, there's a big assumption out there that, you know, if everybody's dependent on state aid, then in the event, once vouchers actually, if they were to ever come to fruition, that there wouldn't be a lot of local control over the use of the true.
Right.
Funding. So.
Yeah, Miss Swenson made me read out all four of those.
That was horrible.
We don't, we can't, we have no control over that, so it's not even.
No.
Debate number, but, um, so all in all, if my math is right, it almost, it almost washes itself out, right? The only difference is, is that the, the money comes from the state. You can't use it for things that, you might not be able to use it for the things you need.
Right. Correct. But all in all, there's no growth for our money. So when, when, when I say there's no growth, what we basically got last year, we're basically getting again this year. We have figuring raises and we have to be very, very mindful of how we spend our same pot of money that we have.
Yep. Anything specifically you, you guys wanna see? Cause in the company, you, you wanna see, uh, I wanna see a neutral one, and, and I'm not saying this is what I prefer, but I think it'd be nice to see what it looked like if it was just same money in. And then, I think we need to see a growth model that, that shows, hey, this is what our, with our expected expenditures, here's what we think we would need to operate.
Definitely, I think we're gonna need to see what we're gonna.
Yeah, we got it.
To operate through a year.
Right.
We don't wanna get to the year, find out we're gonna be short. And the only way we can make it up is with INS. We gotta make sure we pay that debt and then maybe have some carryage through.
I'd like, I'd like to know how, how much we can raise that.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Just so everyone knows, Mr. Bright and Mr. Wells were coming in my office last Friday. But I beat them to it by going into their office and bringing them the new estimates from the Warden County appraisal district. The new, new ones? Yes, sir. That, when I went in, it changed their calculation.
Again.
Again.
That only went down by three hundred million on the first suggestion.
So.
Those zeros are.
But remember, that was, that was after I'd already posted this board agenda.
Yeah.
I had to go in and give them an update.
Anything, anything else that you think we need to cover?
No, I, I, I'm concerned about going ahead and setting a rate today. I think after hearing what, what I've heard from all of you, we would be better off setting another meeting in the future that gives us enough time to meet the deadlines.
Of the posting.
Of the posting, that will give you the information you want, which is a net neutral budget and an INS consideration.
I think that's our, our only choice. Well, cause we, we can't, we, we couldn't pick a number today.
But you can pick a number.
No, I know, but I mean, you couldn't.
I mean, we could keep changing it like.
Not at head.
Can't, once we post it, no.
Oh, no? But we don't wanna do that, yeah.
Yeah, we need to, we need to have another meeting and another conversation.
So what they start now?
Well, we, there's a time limit here, right?
Our time limit is it must be in the paper and posted prior to the nineteenth.
That's next Saturday.
That's, that's, yeah.
So week from, was that ten or eleven days from today?
It has to be. Yeah, next Saturday is the ninth. Not this time, but the next is the nineteenth. Did you say it has to be posted on the nineteenth or ten?
It has to be posted.
Before the.
It has to be in the paper by the nineteenth.
Okay.
Okay. So you have to have it, we have to post it, have the meeting, set the rate, and then we have to get it into the newspaper. And Will could have it posted or in the paper on the nineteenth because the twenty-third is too late. So it would have to be in the paper by the nineteenth, which means you could probably do a meeting next week at some point.
Would Wednesday work for everybody? Wednesday, next Wednesday?
The sixteenth?
The six.
I won't know that till Wednesday.
I figured that, but.
It's another noon one.
Like a new, you can.
Can.
Can. I, I would think, I'd like to do another new one. Maybe, which is maybe. I understand.
I like to come, it would be either noon or maybe a little earlier than that.
We can set it at, we can set it at eleven. I mean, is that?
Eleven would probably be a better one.
Yeah.
And, and I'll, I'll have all, I'll, I'll have all your information sooner than that, whenever it may, but.
And what we'll try to do is have it all in the packet.
Yeah.
Hopefully, if the, if Warden County doesn't change it on us, when we send it out to the packet.
Why are they having problems?
Okay, so, so I was told that there's a software, there's a software change.
Yes, a big one.
And so when they changed the software, I guess the input process of going into the new software was the issue. And because our first issue was, the reason that the numbers were wrong was because everything was based on the forty thousand dollar values. And then the next time, they gave us the hundred thousand dollar values, but then they didn't move the homestead exemption from local to state. So then, they, uh, they corrected that, and then they sent, uh, Mr. Callahan another copy when Dave and I were finalizing on five hundred.
Hey, Ms. Smith, you're a part of the, the board. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, can I get off?
Oh, you're with the appraisal? Yeah, there you go.
No, they, they are, and it's been, I mean, it was bad timing, but we have a new head.
Yeah.
And so she's bringing, you know, stuff in then, in the middle of it, new software. And so it's kinda, it's been kinda crazy.
And we're, we're not the only.
No.
We're not the only entity that's in, in limbo now.
Yeah.
Tell them next year we like it all the time.
I would pass that on. Okay, for us to say that.
I'd like to know where our contributor is over there, if he ever had a chance to look that up, what we're spinning over there. Do you know, do you know?
That would be interesting.
When I got off, it was like one sixty-five, one sixty-five, I was just curious what it is.
Well, I had to find out for you.
Off.
Okay, I'll have to.
Okay. Everybody got clear, directed, like y'all don't have any questions?
Yes, no, I'm, I'm pretty clear. We appreciate the board recognizing that we probably need to have better numbers for you. I don't want anybody to look at Mr. Wells. This is not something that he's created. But I also don't want us to lay blame at any other entities' feet. This is all just.
Sure, no, I get it. Eleven, eleven AM.
I blame the state a little bit.
The sixteenth at eleven.
Being so late, figuring out what they were gonna do there.
Well, I still don't, I'll be candid with you, Mr. George, I don't think they're done yet.
I know. Believe me, I don't think they're either.
I think when this next legislative special session comes in, and I think that you, DeBrock's probably experiencing it down the road, I think they're gonna make some other changes that we're not ready for.
Done.
And make them retroactive into the.
Yes, sir. Make them retroactive to September first.
What's a good thing we're doing on this budget? All good? You're good?
I'm good.
You got directions? Okay.
So was that for the, at eleven on the sixteenth?
The sixteenth at eleven AM. Sixteenth at eleven AM. And I appreciate everybody trying to make these work, because I know it is. I know it.
Your rise is getting ready.
But Mr. George, I, I will also say that although we, we are looking at providing our staff with a four percent raise, I do believe budgetarily, I do believe our numbers based upon these calculations are, are pretty solid.
Oh, they're solid.
I, I think we're budgetarily in good shape for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We do know we're gonna have to have things to look at when we go into twenty-four, twenty-five, but we knew that already. We do know we're gonna have to have things to look at when we go into twenty four, twenty five, but we knew that already.
Twenty three, twenty four, we're gonna be okay. Twenty four, twenty five, we'll talk about that next year.
Well, we need to plan for that, though, I mean.
We are.
That might, that might be, need to take into consideration this issue.
I, I agree.
So let's go ahead and move on to item four A, the approval, consideration of approval of germ blast. Illness and infection prevention pro- program contract.
Uh, board members, I would recommend approval. We are paying for this at Esther's, so it doesn't impact our general fund at all.
So move.
Time of motion by Mister Irwin, second by Mister Dubrock, all in favor, raise your right hand, oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
I would recommend you table four B to August eleventh and, or August sixteen, at eleven PM?
AM, I'm not gonna be here at PM.
Good, well, maybe you, maybe you'll go someplace else for the eleven PM meeting.
Yep, so we will table that, uh, we don't need to.
I'll make that motion.
Do we need to?
Motion to table?
Yes, a motion to table, second from Mister Irwin, all, all in favor, raise your right hand, oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, four C, discussion consideration, uh, time for a public hearing. We will table that as well.
I would set that, I would set that for August twenty ninth.
Oh, okay, yeah.
At six forty five. But that would require a motion and a second.
I'd seek a motion to set a uh, public hearing to discuss proposed budget tax rate. I have a motion by uh, Miss Smith. And a second by Mister Irwin. The uh. All in favor, raise your right hand, oppose, same sign. That's August twenty ninth at six forty five.
That's the next board.
That's the regular, that would be fifteen. Yeah, yeah, right.
BE local board is the issue of when you set your normal monthly meetings that will happen beginning in September?
And we discussed uh. Mondays. We threw out sixes. Yeah, that's what we, we threw out, we ta- we, we wanted to make, y'all weren't here last time and we, we kicked around ideas. But we, we did kind of settle on Monday, and we threw out times, and I think the times, the times that we threw out were six. And then we, we went to five thirty at one point in the discussion and we said, well, let's wait till everybody's here. Anthony says five thirties won't work, so with sixes, I mean, has it?
We do six, I would really like to consider Wednesday if we could, just because I have commitments on Mondays or later. But I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Is the time, if we set a time now, does it have to stay that way the whole year?
No.
No, I mean, it keeps ringing, so I can't do six.
Yeah.
And seven, I'll, I'll, I'll work, you know. Four, seven o'clock, but fall and, you know.
Winter, yeah.
I can do six.
Yeah. So. We can do six on a Wednesday. Does it, does anybody, cause we have a conflict on the Monday, does?
I'm, I'm fine on Wednesdays. I guess the only issue I see is that we're having, acknowledging some students or something and. That's a big church night.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the reason.
That's the only conflict I've.
That's why we steer to work Monday, wouldn't it?
I don't think we didn't do that much.
Let's move to track. Let's try, we'll get, we'll try it soon. We try Wednesdays at six. That's gonna replace the Tuesdays at seven meetings. So that will basically, yeah.
Be starting in September, the fourth Wednesday of the month. Is what I'm hearing being proposed right now. It's not, it's not a motion yet, but.
Six PM. I'll seek a motion that we move our regular meetings, uh, and amend the BE, uh, board policy, BE local. To have our meetings the fourth Wednesday of every month at six PM.
I still move.
Have a motion by.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Again, again, the time we can, we can play with.
Yes, we can, we can play with that. All right, so we'll do uh, six PM, I have a motion, and a, and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Because when we do come back, we're already gonna have some exceptions to that little, December will be one exception, will be the third Wednesday. Graduation would be in May, meeting would be another exemption. We have flexibility as long as we promote it in advance.
So next is uh, four E, which is discussion and consideration with interlocal contract between Department of Information Resources and El Campol SD.
Let me just tell everybody, this is, this is a formality coming from the state. Is it gonna eventually come? Have you guys heard of it yet?
No.
Okay, well, Department of Information Resources basically controls the technology section and. They're going to say that everything you do has gotta go through them. And so right now, they have a free contract. To use this, to kind of pilot it. Um, and we're in the midst of uh, of a negotiation right now that. The company we're working with won't complete it until we have a DIR in place.
So we have no choice, so. Yeah, exactly.
Well, it will be, and I'm, I'm gonna just tell everybody that my, my assumption is very similar to what Mister Wells mentioned earlier is that. When the state implements this, there will be a cost. But right now, it's free.
This is the bill they're running out of reaching for, but it's a state bill.
Correct, yeah. I figured you've already got it, done your way to.
I will seek a motion to uh, approve the district uh, to enter into a contract between. The Department of Infor- Information Resources and El Campol SD. Motion by Mister George, second by Mister Dubrock, all in favor, raise your right hand, oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And then uh, that'll take us.
Does anybody need to go into, to close session, discuss any of the personnel issues that you've become aware of? Nope. I think I was pretty clear, but I left it out here for. You don't need to go into a session, man.
All right, so in a timely fashion, it is now uh, eleven.
Forty, forty?
Twelve forty.
Twelve forty, and there being no further business on the agenda, I now declare this meeting adjourned.